Good evening, you're now viewing the meeting recording in stream for the Scottsdale Town Council work session. Today is Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name's Matt Lawless, I serve as Scottsdale Town Administrator. This evening's meeting is held in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and the state's open meeting laws. Our meeting is open to the public at the Town Hall, four oh one Valley Street. We also have opportunities for the public to participate online and by phone. It is seven o'clock here now, we don't have our car on quite seated yet, so I'll meet this line and we'll come to order short.
Man said he wasn't going to ever be here tonight. Prior commitment, uh, got everybody else it looks like. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll ask Chief James if he will go ahead and give his report. Glad to, very thankful for having the council members, thank you. For allowing me to be here this evening and sharing a little information about increase of power. As you can see, a number of significant calls for service. The first one was been at Danny where an individual was arrested with shop instances up here with uh, smacking a battery. That little visual been uh, arrested. Point six hundred and ninety-nine, and we had him just sent to the lab and he was charged. Uh, if William Larson knew the next call service that Ray Larson has been involved. The few individuals who were able to work with him and it looks like some voluntary restitution. Was agreed upon between the two individuals, so we closed that out exceptionally. Uh, you can see Officer Wood conducted a traffic stop and uh, the driver played a scene. Very short from city, down uh, Jamesburg Road. He did terminate to that for short, short ways, warrants happened in team on the other side. And you can see a felony record straight out of these, right off here. And we still come to the board. Neighborhood events, that was council meeting was on January nineteenth. Uh, people asked to do a community outreach program at the center of Elbier. To do a program, ECOs and people go process. The principal at uh, Scottsville Elementary. Reached out to me and asked us about picnic lunches, uh, at the school, a couple times a month. Uh, with his staff and the other children up there at the school. And that started uh, last week anyway. Our result, the artillery officer, twenty-two hours of work time for the month. And you can see their savings that they found during the fiscal year. Uh, one new policy added this past month. You can see that the police department, net of government services committee, the government department along Valley Street, United traditions, we are attached. I think the number of the meetings, uh, the number of the members here at council were uh, at that meeting. And we have an, there should be a spreadsheet right there in front of you. With an under recommendation that were put forward between uh, myself in the police department and the government services committee. And that will be for awards consideration on how we wanted us to receive with the project. I do see some of the yellow tape being painted on the street, so start to look good. Uh, in my view, Mr. Payne, they're playing um, ACP in Scottville, I know the mayor's son at the end of you. This past month with uh, ACP and it looks like I got word from the deputy chief that it's going to their ward super lot, when they consider to have a market. So hopefully we'll have that sign up. Uh, we did receive a complaint regarding vehicles parked up here on the washers. I did talk with the owner of uh, the vehicles and got them moving off of the street. So that probably is unprepared. Region ten notified me that uh, they are gonna be opening up a rental beds at Western State. So I'm hopeful that that might alleviate some of the uh, the pressure from us sitting so long in the hospital and they have these ECOs and ECOs which would get uh, our consumers uh, better really quickly to set for twenty-four hour. Uh, readout, traffic engineering department, as you can see. I wanted to explain this to the council. So uh, John Lawson did reach out to me and they have done their study, as you can see, it's such in that perfectly. That one. As you can see all the far right of that screen, that's a list of all of the crashes that are in that area between Irish Road down to CNS Motor.
From about fifteen years, yeah.
So what the next page we're doing, you should know. Is what they are gonna do is, you can see they're gonna place on the southbound side of another curb sign. Above the speed limit sign, is replace that speed limit sign up there. And then they're gonna come below it with eight of those reflective monitors and put in that curb. But highlight that curb going to that, and then coming back on the northbound side, they're gonna put another uh, turn uh, curb sign on the northbound side too. Hopefully, these uh, traffic compliments maybe help keep people from driving through this. Barlock, his garage there.
And shoot phone, right there, uh, you think they may remove the veils and the orange cones.
As soon as uh, I did reach out to uh, John Wilson and he said that they should do the work on it, it was clearly couldn't be that. Um, Lawson just goes, you know, I will. Oh, or thirty, see, get straight up with the very part. Yes, man.
You said between Irish Road and CN, Irish Road is sick, right?
No, definitely.
Okay.
No, John. Yeah, right here. So I was, so now we're gonna deal with the stuff, how would you do that here? So they're gonna put this type of sign, and here's your question south, and then replace that speed limit sign with a new.
That's by, by.
This is actually down, I'm in south.
Right at the Scottville.
Where uh, what is being followed well. Where this comes out, and that's his shop right here, putting on places, markers, those reflective markers and curves. So hopefully that'll help with some of the. Part of his part, but we will see. Um. Let's see, Matt and I have friends and I know the buyer, which you got aggravated. You were close for less than five, but it hasn't been accepted. And we have been authorized to uh, make our next purchase on our new base pair. So been working with uh, OC Welch, OC Ford out of South Carolina. And uh, Mr. Welch actually gave me a better price than state contract, when we like use Welch's part. So as you can see here, well, I probably didn't put it in yours. But uh, those new police cars have gone up significantly in prices the last one we called. And uh, we were at, we were to save about forty-one hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, myself and Officer Wood will have to make a trip down to South Carolina to pick it up. And then I believe we are scheduled to go on the twenty-third of this month. So we'll make a road trip, um, we'll leave Saturday and early, early. I'll hit down there, know uh, Mr. Lawless is gonna cut me the check, I'll take the check down, we'll get the title and everything for the car, drive it back to Romo. And uh, Tom Trella, uh, that's his name, Brooks Communication, why shouldn't be doing the building up this car? So they're ordering the equipment now, they, they actually come in under bed from uh, uh, east coast who builds cars for. Us and I want, we can get up here, so we're gonna drop the car and uh, run it, run it back up. Right on the side of it. But hopefully we'll be able to get that car built and on the road, relative to quick to the point. So like, and spend the money and we can get the work through for it.
Is there any value in our older vehicles to be traded or sold to different many towns or municipalities?
Well, that's a great question, so my plan sir is to. The car that Officer Wood is in now will become our spare car. And then the spare car that we have to jump to start, uh, will decommission that car, take all of the weeks to put it out of it. And then that, the town will be able to sell that car.
Okay.
So whatever we could get out of that vehicle, come back into the council budget.
Fair enough.
Then we can probably get it, I would say somewhere between maybe four and seven thousand dollar. Right? So it's been working okay, uh, I'm hoping that we'll be able to expedite purchase of this car, equip the car and get it on the road a lot quicker than we did that last one. Right? Thank you, Chief, any questions for the Chief? Appreciate all you and your department, fellows for our community. Uh, Chamber of Commerce.
Well, the whole of your department, but uh, when are we asked to put new things out in the agenda? Can we?
A week before the agenda comes out.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna add something today, right now, something, or next week.
All right.
A couple things.
All right.
The first one is uh, uh, we, we're supposed to do this in January, uh, to have our annual meeting, uh, organizational meeting in, in next month. Or next week, so we gotta go over a little bit charters and things like that, organized kind of thing, so I wanna see if that could be the annual meeting, which is. Yeah, I'm actually when the last, you know when the last one was met? That's annual meeting?
I'd have to go back and look at it.
I think that one, well, but reported a law or whatever, it's, it's supposed to be really after the election in January. And we didn't have that, so because we had the development, so I like to do that. The other thing uh, I'd like to put on, but it might be it here, but I didn't see it, but uh, next week to have a closed interview. Uh, close session for the interview for this new advocacy. I mean, that's, that's a pretty basic one, we could probably do that. You know, take a break and try and look at the applicants and uh, and appoint some, we need to do that pretty quick. And the last thing, uh, this might be in this one already, but uh, to, to review the financial ordinances, uh, cause there's three, I, I know what the town has, and this one with annual res- resolution appropriations. Is the one that, that's new to me, but I, you know, the charter and the other one, uh, the, you know, they're all, they all saying different things, so I like this. I don't know, look at this week or maybe next week, but uh, to go over the financial regulations here.
I feel like that between A and B under new topics would fall into that.
Do they?
I think so, councilable strategy and project for next.
Sounds good, sounds good, okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay, so, okay, and then, and it's already ended with kiosk and that's department with this side, uh, so that's what we have. That's the ones I have.
Great, um, would, would you, would you like to reorganize this one with um, respect to the scan folks' time? On this agenda?
New stands, get them.
Yeah, I'll listen.
Let's go over.
Cause I had a couple things I wanted to add to, but that, you know, scans like you, you wanna do. You know, you turn them on the way and talk.
Sure, okay.
You're gonna go through item one, A through E, and then item two, A through C, and then we will get into new topics and we will. Move land use reports and upcoming public hearings to the top of the list.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Uh, board, chamber board met on Wednesday, this February first. The gentleman uh, who uh, created the new website for the chamber uh, was in attendance to answer any questions and uh, it's, it's really a nice, really nice website and all of us who are members of the chamber uh, were given the instructions on how to uh, get into the website, our passwords and all that stuff, so we can add things to our ads if we have a person that has an ad in, in, on the chamber website. And you wanna put some sort of notes or pictures or whatever, you can do that. Um, the chamber is thinking uh, seriously for a fundraiser, having a community yard sale on the last Saturday in March. Week before the commerce market opens and the uh, the procedure would be for the chamber to rent booth spaces at the farmer's market pavilion for twenty-five dollars a space and then people just. Whoever rents the space can bring whatever they want to and sell it, that, for their own profit. Uh, the chamber would get the twenty thousand dollar rental fee, so that's uh, that's gonna be confirmed at our next uh, next board meeting.
Would it be a yard sale type thing, or would it be like a, like a? Art vendor type thing?
It's gonna be, be classified as a yard sale.
I, I knew you said it, but I didn't.
I'm saying, uh, I think that's the, that's the direction we're going right now, rather than like an, an art, you know, we're gonna do an art, art fair, we should do it. Just all artists and not just uh, people with items that.
Would you like me to try to get some food trucks or something out there?
If you wanna do that, sure, try to catch up with Debbie and see what we can do, chance could, I could have an event.
The website.
Yeah.
Do we have a way to link it? Did we, where we, refresh my memory, cause I feel like we've talked about this and I don't have my notes with me from prior meetings. Are we redoing our website too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we can, we can have.
I think that could be today about, uh, bids for that.
Yeah. Uh, you know, certainly ought to consider the gentleman that did the chambers because it's a really good website and it's thirty-two hundred dollars.
Did she have a list of the wealth network?
Uh, I, I'll get his contact, we got his contact.
Cause they did three rounds.
But uh.
Yeah, I'll get it. We got a good.
It was like thirteen hundred dollars down and a hundred and twenty dollars a month with, a year, or you know, that was. Something most anybody should be able to afford. Um, do we have any report from ARB since that uh, chairmanship is vacant at the moment?
I looked over the meeting and met Aaron and Austin, and I've known Josh, but saw him there too, got a little familiar with what, you know, how everything worked.
Okay.
Aaron, you even talked about that at all, I mean, you were on fantastic little meeting, we talked about a couple of things around town and kinda getting my feet under me there, but.
The, the noteworthy application is a um, a new rear entrance at the Methodist Church, they're looking for a better accessible entryway into the um, the actual church space, so it's a, a ramp that goes into the second level there to access it from the Jackson Street side. It's a tricky design, so ARB wasn't ready to approve anything yet, but they're working on the full plans. But it's a good example of historic needed accessibility improvements that can be done in a historic way.
A ramp going into the second level?
Yeah.
From where?
From the Jackson Street side, oh, right, right outside here, they've got sort of a path around, a little storage shed and then a. Kind of a ramp space.
Around here somewhere, you know, like right up over there, my house, there's a wooden ramp that goes up. I don't know if you ever look behind, it's gonna go around that area, but start near the pavilion side of things, so it's not gonna be like, you know, a huge incline there.
It's clever compared to a major redo on the interior to make ramps and things inside.
Take a window out on the side of the building, make a doorway and see come down the ramp and go in to the office area.
Okay.
The, office area on the museum side of the building.
Thanks for welcoming.
I'll just add that, um, that's not for the meeting, but I would add, but um, we're also continuing on the inventory and reviewing the corrugated properties.
Okay, sounds good. Um, Mr. Briscoe is not with us, so any report on planning commission activities?
Sorry. This is the planning commission agenda from February sixth. They talked a little bit about their comprehensive plan process um, with um, some needs. Trying to keep the cost of the comprehensive plan update down, understanding the town's overall budget situation. Relying on increased volunteer activity and student internship resources. Um, so I posted that internship consistent with our, our previous postings, and we'll start the word on volunteer recruiting related to the, the data gathering needs, some further community meetings, you know, help with outreach, and then um, uh, actual document work, creating a plan that's more readable, shorter and, and visually interesting than what we have now. They um, discussed uh, home stays, tax amendments, uh, town council had. Given the kind of assignment to simplify that process and create a difference between a whole house conversion and a home stay, which would be defined differently as um, you live in a place but have an extra bedroom and take guests on in that extra bedroom. So they looked at that draft, but there were a few um, health and safety regulation requirements on it. Not certain about health department and fire marshal access um, for some of these rental lodgings. So there's a little bit more research to do to work on the draft before they report anything out. Um, but they're continuing with that um, research assignment from council last year.
Not Airbnb started, isn't that what Airbnb was initially, was like just renting out next year with your house?
Absolutely.
Is. I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I'm figuring out what I'm trying to ask, in the middle of asking.
It just sort of got out of control.
It got out of control and turned into a hotel type thing, but um, there have to be. I would imagine, I have no idea how Airbnb works, what their website looks like or anything. But there's gotta be like other places in Virginia that have done this, like, can we not find out from Airbnb, like, these are the things that need, that a, a person told me to do it, or?
They do, there's a, there's a toggle on the booking websites of, are you interested in a whole house kind of space? Because privacy, you want multiple bedrooms, or are you willing to maybe pay a little bit less and have just a suite within, within someone's home? And then Airbnb has a checklist for the hosts, like, do you have real estate access to your home? Is there a fire extinguisher in the room? But I, I wouldn't trust the booking company to meet state fire code necessarily. What they make helpful for bookings might not be everything that we're looking for. But, but yes, this is a, it's a hot topic in the state because it used to be more of the idea of, I have a finished basement, let me make a little extra money by having people stay in it. And what it's turned into is buying up a whole block of homes and running them as a hotel. So for us to be able to say, you know, this should be easy, but this should be hard, is sort of the idea.
Alright.
Yeah.
Matt, you mentioned uh, the intern program that. The planning commission was addressing, looking at, I think in my opinion, they would probably hit three interns. Does that cost ten?
We do pay them, yes.
So. If we're doing a financial strap, maybe we should not pay them and not have interns.
Possibly, uh, I think of it as a cost efficiency, where if compared to the price of a um, full-fledged consultant, sometimes a grad student can do that work as a resume builder a lot more cheaply than if we put it out to bid for consultants.
But you know. What do they cost? Let's hope we don't have to put it out to consultants, you know, you know what it costs.
In the, in the neighborhood of three, four thousand dollars for a summer's work compared to twenty, thirty thousand for similar consultant projects. I think the cost savings is substantial.
But you know, sometimes we're paying twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars where we don't have to, so we don't have to pay that small amount either, so.
True.
I would suggest that the planning commission be advised of the cost, uh, if they have already.
True.
But I think also, I think council is approved that, you know, if there's no, you know, this is not what it was, so it doesn't, doesn't happen automatically with. It's very important.
That's where the budget comes in.
Yeah, exactly, but I don't know if that's been decided before, I'm always looking at the season, like, that we have an internship that's, you know, before it becomes an ideal one, but. If you can't have it, you look at that, each time, I don't remember, I don't really hear about that.
Yeah, we, that's where we, that's where we strike it from the budget, we need to, so we don't have to discuss it later.
True.
When the budget comes in.
That's right, that's right.
Um, we have interns at the museum and um, a lot of them come from UVA. And if we have an intern for the summer, a lot of times UVA will, will pay part of the.
Yeah.
Compensation, so it may run into something like that, or you set aside a certain amount, if we can get somebody for that amount, you get on this stand, yeah.
There's also.
I'll point you to other planning commission reports.
What's that?
Uh, there, there were two other notable planning commission reports. Um, they got a first, um, first word about an incoming subdivision uh, review. This will be a significant land use matter, um, so I, I wanna make sure that it's, you know, as, as out in community discussions as possible. The subdivision application will probably come in for next month's planning commission agenda. I heard from the engineers who are working on it now. It relates to the one hundred and fifty acre tract bordered by Blenheim Road, Albuena Springs Road. Down behind the Pine and Holly Street subdivisions um, on down to the Van Cleef Nature Area, about a hundred and fifty acres total. Um, it would be a buy right subdivision process in the neighborhood of forty-five to fifty-five single family home lots. There's no special use permit application on this, but rather the buy right division for the existing village residential and rural areas tracks. Um, so there's um, there's not a zoning application or change of property rights on the site, but rather the buy right division for it. I don't have any um, imagery to show yet on it, but the engineers asked me about what our code requirements were, the application fees and the documentation. So planning commission will have that probably on their agenda for next month and we'll start their subdivision work. Um, I expect that will be a hot topic in community because it's a large change and a large number of homes, so make you aware of it.
If it's probably right, but. Are they bringing with your plan commission?
We still have subdivision regulations um, about the size and location of streets, the shape of the lots, the location of utilities and water lines, where the driveways are. So there are technical standards that planning commission looks at when they make what's called a ministerial decision. They're not making a, a, council's not making a law that changes the property rights, but we still have technical review in how a subdivision is laid out properly. Um, so it's important to explain to the community, but like in, in contrast to like the factory apartment's decision where there was a vote that changed the zoning, here there's no change to the zoning.
So, uh, also would you those, thanks for the fact?
No, sir.
Which is, uh, uh, thank you, this is everything.
Yes.
Okay, that's for a challenge.
Hmm.
The last housing project we had um, came to, to cancel because of special use commitment involved.
Correct.
Um. I think we voted on about a year ago. Um, they've been in process um, for, for four years, so how long does this discussion have to process before we're finding out about it? You know?
I, I just had the first meeting with the engineers on it uh, three weeks ago before it came up to planning commission, so.
So nobody from the town has talked with the people that want to develop Blenheim. Um, except for the last three weeks.
They initiated that conversation about what they wanna do with the property.
About what they want to do with the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause we didn't even vote on Blenheim, remember, they pulled out, they didn't vote.
I'm just saying that the other process for the thirty-six homes was, was across the four years, this is three weeks. Something's out of control.
Because it's the buy right, it's buy right, they, they don't have to.
That was buy right too, I'm sure they.
The other was learning changes, special use.
Exactly, but when did they decide that, Ron?
Sir.
When did they decide that? Three weeks ahead of time, like this, or?
It's not gonna be decided here, it's.
It's not gonna be decided here, I'm saying, what I'm saying is. That was the development, and there was reasonably required as special use commitment.
Exactly.
And this, um, the developer or whoever owns the property, which we can't see and determine, um, has said, no, we just wanna go buy it right, and that is their right, what I'm saying is, it, it seems that. We should have known, you know, something about this other one. And then they apply for special use. And then they apply for special use permit. So I'm just saying, it doesn't take three weeks to make that, you know, determination?
Oh, okay, the, the subdivision review process will take several months for sure. We don't have anything submitted from them in writing yet. Um, I just want, I wanted to give the first heads up of, I met an engineer who's working on the project, but they don't have anything drawn yet. So it'll take planning commission quite a while to work through it all.
So they might have been working on it all year since they pulled out before the last. But then only contacted us.
Yeah, what's the application fee, what needs to go in the packet?
Whatever they do, it'll have to be approved by accounting, whatever.
Oh, yeah, so it's, it's not just the town planning commission, but the, the county stormwater office, um, VDOT.
Right.
Um, if there's wells, the health department inspects them.
So, it's uh, but rural, that was one acre, but one house for two acres, that was it?
The, the majority of the parcel, a hundred acres is rural, which is yes, two acres with the residual. And fifty acres of it is village, which without a special use permit is acre and a half sized lots. So it depends how the lots are laid out, but you're in forty-five to fifty-five building nights. They have, um, there's twenty-eight lots that are already cut there, which never got built. Um, those and then a hundred and fifty acres is this subject parcel, which like I said, has in the neighborhood of fifty development rights.
That's the whole, that's the whole.
The whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, are they, are they gonna do, uh, I don't know, are they gonna do any, um, by setting? Do they have to do that?
No.
No, because the traffic's okay. And what about, uh, they don't have to do a, we don't have, they don't have to have a financial. So we have, so what, if that would be our, well, that's a town, we could finance it slightly.
Yes, what might be the, if you have a projected population growth, what, how might your services change?
So that'll be a challenge.
Yes.
Is that a parcel in the town?
Yes.
So that'll be, so this, so it'll take a while.
It will, it will, so it'll important back and forth of how that's moving, what planning commission is seeing in their um, technical work and what that might mean for the other things that are important to council. Um, the last thing that planning commission took up um, last week related to um, their role in sidewalk construction, um, that we've got the VDOT sidewalk grant. That grant goes back to twenty nineteen, um, and the um, cost share was always a, a matter of concern, a four hundred thousand dollar project. Um, I had some advice from VDOT recently with increased concern about the budget and scoping on that. Um, they've, they've had poor results when projects go over budget and the town is on the hook for the overrun and everyone's unhappy. And as long as this project has been delayed, uh, VDOT's advice to us was to go ahead and cancel this, redesign it and then reapply potentially for a larger grant or something else. It also plays into the discussion in town about possible one-way street alignments, um, something that could be done for improved parking for the churches or a different kind of design. Since we had these multiple questions, VDOT's recommendation to us was to go ahead and cancel this project, not be on the hook for the match. Um, and rethink what we wanted to do over there. Um, that seemed wise to me because it, uh, we're going into a, a budget deficit issue and this is one of our biggest capital projects. Um, planning commission found that persuasive and did uh, vote some encouragement to council to go ahead and cancel the project.
I have a lot of thoughts on the one-way.
Sure.
Streets, is that something that we would have to put before planning commission or is that something?
If, if we go ahead on the redesign, you know, start that conversation again and think about the pros and cons of everything that we might do there.
But not even taking sidewalks out of the, you know, out of, out of the conversation for the time being. Just one-way streets in general, is that something that town council could discuss or is it something we would have to put before the planning commission first?
Either way, um, maybe, maybe an initial council discussion about an idea and then give a, um, give a project to the planning commission for study, but if you could scope basically what you thought the options and the sort of pros and cons are, you know, what's the question? They can, they can study it.
Sorry, I know that's.
No, no worries.
It was a little off topic, the sidewalks, but, but when you were talking about the one-way street.
Possibly happened.
What, one-way streets?
We're no social development staff, yeah, I don't think we should just do it, let's say, do it.
I think we should, as, as somebody who lives on Harrison Street and walks and gets nearly hit by a car three, three times a week. I think we should talk about it before developments. Yeah, I think Harrison should be a one-way.
Okay, anything else on planning commission?
No, sir.
Treasurers report.
With um, uh, I'll try to carry some of this on the tag team with um, Mr. Adalis. He's representing us at a um, county meeting this evening. But um, he left um, some detail on our financial routines that might help with some of the policy discussion as well. So I'd, I'd like to share a couple of things on his behalf and, and then be glad to get into um, Q and A on the financial policies and how we do our work. Javier wanted to share some of just what he does in a regular month. Um, so he, he set aside the December bills paid file. We keep one of these for every month with all of the invoices and the check stubs that we pay. Um, so we keep the phone bill and the check stub for all of that. These files accumulate every month and then this is what our auditor looks at at the end of the year. So we have an approved budget, um, the line items are there and then they confirm that everything that we spent lines up in, in that way. Go through all the credit card details, make sure we have receipts for everything, assuring that what we said we were gonna spend money on was what we spent money on. Um, what, uh, what you see in your monthly financial report is the, the sum of all of this activity. So when you see a, an increase in the, you know, phone bill line, it tracks back to everything that we're paying to Wright Speed and Verizon. Um, so these are available. Um, Javier works on uh, checking account reconciliation, similar, similar to balancing personal checkbook where everything in his QuickBooks ledger gets confirmed to one of these check stubs so that he's creating an invoice and a payment and putting each of these checks on the appropriate budget line. So he checks through that um, at the beginning of every month when he gets a bank statement to make sure that those are correct, all of the charges posted to the accounts. If one of our vendors has been slow to cash one of our checks, we'll see that discrepancy where um, we created the invoice, we sent the check, put it in the mail, but it hasn't shown up yet, so we can inquire on that. Likewise, if we're slow to make a deposit, um, here's, we've, we've acknowledged the money came in, but it hasn't hit the budget yet. So he reconciles those. One of the areas where sometimes localities are more involved is on that monthly reconciliation because right now government services committee and town council don't see that. It's done as staff work, we check our accounts, our auditor looks at our reconciliation statements, but you don't have an independent opinion that where it says this is how much money we have all, in all of our accounts, that's correct. Um, because this file goes in a filing cabinet, you get this monthly financial report, but you don't have a double check on it being correct, you're trusting the staff work there. Was there, was there anything you wanted to ask about how we pay our bills?
Is there a time that these files will be accessible if we wanna come up and check them out and stuff like that and just kinda get a better scope of how it works?
Yeah, and so the financial files are open, um, Javier is working on the monthly reconciliation for January right now. Um, and so these are, these are open, there's nothing um, sensitive about uh, what we're paying for in any of those details. Um, it just gives you a further level of detail on, you know, what's in this line item. So if we're, if we're spending on um, office supplies and you were asking, okay, what office supplies? You can see the receipts from Staples here.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, so the, the next part of it is um, check signing. So we, we get a bill, um, create an invoice, prepare the check. The way our accounts are set up, we have three check signers, the mayor, the vice mayor and the treasurer, which is me. And two signatures are required on each check. So Javier uh, batches up these checks and um, prepares those checks for payment. And then generally the mayor and I meet together, look at the checks and sign them. Um, if either of us is absent, the vice mayor is the third check signer. So there's that level of visibility before a check goes out. If um, if I have a question about what is this bill? Another staff member made it, why are we buying this? I can, I can ask the clerk that and look at this invoice detail and work on it. And the mayor can do the same. Um, we had a question last month, sir, about um, the number and type of payments that are made over a thousand dollars.
Actually, I think it should be five hundred. That's what it said in the chart, five hundred.
Okay.
Thought about a thousand dollars, but it's part of the charter, it's eighty-one, five hundred.
Sure. Um, without um, delaying any payments in a way that would um, get us in trouble. Um, Javier held a set of checks that were in those larger amounts. So the recent ones that he, he's received are the um, insurance premiums for all of the staff health insurance and from Blue Cross Blue Shield is um, is seven thousand dollars. Um, the, the bundled electric bill for Appalachian Power is just, is just over a thousand this month. Um, the um, monthly payment to the town attorney is twelve hundred dollars this month. And the total of all of the credit cards is eighteen hundred dollars this month with the itemized charges. Um, Javier shared some, some concern about um, the payment process here and the timing. He gets these bills and doesn't always have a ton of time between, like your home bills, between when you get it in the mail and when it needs to be paid before penalties. So it might be tricky to insert um, a council vote on these before the due date on the payments.
We don't need to.
I think there's a big difference between operational and like capital expenditure.
Indeed.
And I think that's where there needs to be a stop down and say like, okay, we got the kiosks, we got the HVAC, we got the rocks, we got uh, these, you know, these could cost this much, this much, let's shop around and uh, and have, I feel like there should be a committee member or a town council all those decisions because there's so many committees, you know, that uh, maybe we need a budget committee to, to see those, those kinds of expenditures. But I mean, if you're gonna buy staples and paper and stuff, you know, that's a big, you know, big deal, but for the phone bill. But I, what the biggest expenses are, these ones that look at are uh, that the town's paying for, it would be an achievement for us.
Yep. Uh, I'm fully supervised with that and, and well, well agree that there is a, a difference between basic operations where we have to pay the bill and discretionary projects where the difference between, you know, there's a, there's a real fiscal impact if we do it one way versus another. And more help and a little bit of delay can help us do a, a better value.
Yeah, I don't think we would ever vote to like not pay Jake, like it was not paying real electric, you know, stuff like that, I don't think.
Right. So focusing the, the policy change on those discretionary projects, capital spending in particular. If we're gonna buy this big, long-lasting thing, let's be more careful about scoping it, procuring it, approving it.
Even if, yeah, even if it's within, I'm gonna use the Kia as an example, like so even if that amount of money is in the budget for parks or, you know, whatever, you know, that one fell under. Like when we were talking about signs for Van Cleef, honestly, in my head, I was thinking like those sidewalk signs. You know, like with the big sign, I was thinking it was gonna be something in the, in the ballpark of five hundred dollars.
Right, right.
So I was just shocked when
Yeah.
I found out how much, you know, things like that.
Well, that makes sense, so the more frequent check-ins, like Chief Jenkins delivered on this vehicle, right? So you've had, you've had several months of update, we're, we're doing the grant application, which gets a vote. The, the grant is in progress. Um, now we're actually procuring the thing and by shopping around, he was able to achieve some savings.
Yes.
And we're proceeding forward. So if, if there were major concern, you know, right up until now, like, oh no, I, I absolutely think this should go to a Virginia car dealership. Don't go to South Carolina.
Yeah.
Okay, you have a chance to vote on that before we spend the money. Right?
I'm all for saving them.
Yeah, but I, I, so I, I, I very well hear that as the, the process change that needs to happen.
Matt, you mentioned, um, you know, it's three statements of the check, you have a check?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When was the last time?
No, just.
Two.
Oh, two out of three.
Two of the three.
Two, but the three eligible people signed.
Yes.
If the mayor, you know, whatever, so when's the last time that a check was signed, signed to you and the mayor?
When I was on vacation last, um, the end of July, the mayor and vice mayor did them.
And what was that for?
What, what did we buy then?
I mean, what, yeah.
Oh, I don't know, sir.
Did you remember the date, but you don't remember why?
Oh, why was I on vacation? Oh, yes.
That was the last time?
I believe so, yes. I thought you were asking what it was we bought.
I, I want to, well, I just wanted to know if this policy is enforced. I've had it personally myself. Understand the reason, but um, I just wondered how often does it happen?
Yeah, it's pretty rare that the mayor and I are not both around. We, we can get away with some of it by delaying when the checks are signed. We're mostly, you know, we have some flexibility, so if you have a busy schedule, we can hold the checks a couple days.
Yeah, some of them sit for example.
Yeah.
Like I've mentioned here before, not too long ago, as a matter of fact, I look at each check and see what it's for and see that it's reasonable or at least it falls within the guidelines that it's supposed to fall within before I sign it. And if I have a question about it, I ask Matt to explain it. And he does. So.
Well, I think we failed on at least three occasions with that oversight.
Yes, sir, I understand.
You could, I guess, somebody needs to, you know, uh, a budget person looking at the expense of it and also we can have the budget at the time years, so sometimes it could be delayed. Oh, they say, say, say so, it's like, yes.
Absolutely.
Look at the budget and say, whoa, we're, we're waiting after, we need money here or working with a website. This is more important than we have in our, you know, five house dollar kiosk, you know, and we could at least discuss those kind of things.
Yeah.
Five dollars, dollar rock priorities, I think.
Five dollars, kiosk, twenty-five thousand, boulders and eighteen thousand dollars, too much? For, for the addition in the year.
Yes, sir.
If, if the mayor wants to take um, responsibility for that oversight, we'll plan through.
If the money is in the budget in a certain category.
You don't have to spend it, Ron. You don't have to spend.
Spend it, but if it's there and it's something we need. Who voted no? The council did, they approved the budget.
No, we, we approved the projects. Opened up, we have some input back. So you did, for example, did you look at the three bills for the AC?
No.
Oh, but you signed one check?
Yes, exactly.
But.
The money was there and it was designated for that and that's probably.
I expect them to resell and pay their better bid.
It was designated for the solar batteries, Ron.
We should have been able, we're here on the day.
We made a decision.
Who did?
Well, that's your opinion, that's not mine.
Well, how value you?
I don't value why you wanna destroy everything in this town by voting against everything that comes up before us.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're getting, uh, but I do think it needs oversight in, in several people's um, uh, eyes on, on the budget. Because I think there's, there's some unreasonably spending. I don't, and I don't think that there was anything in the budget about kiosks. At, at least I didn't say anything, I, I, I wasn't that out today, but I, there was fourteen thousand dollars or uh, or uh, with the parks and the, the kiosk costs twenty-eight thousand now. And I don't know how that could be justified and, and, and I don't, did you sign the one for the gate, I don't know.
I don't, I just signed a thousand checks in the last few years, I don't know what I have, I can't spare each one of them, okay?
Okay, but that's, but that's what we probably need, uh, not operational, but.
If it's coming out of a fund that has got the money in it to pay for it and that money says capital improvements and this is a capital improvement, it gets signed.
No, it's that, that, we got.
Capital improvements, we've got, we've got to change that.
I mean, we've got to change it, this, this whole thing of uh, this uh, you know, appropriation thing, I think needs to be mixed. I think with anything over a certain amount needs to be centralized on it and see if, and look at the budget and see if we can do it.
I mean, the fact of the matter is the charter. I mean, the fact of the matter is the charter says anything over two fifty. Whether it's, whether it's in the budget or not, comes before council.
Why did nobody bring that up at the time? Because the council voted, if you vote to approve the project, if you vote to approve the project, you automatically say and pay for it. And when you say automatically say pay for it, it's got to come out of the foreign fund that it's designated for.
Well, we didn't vote to put up kiosks.
That's just their decision.
I, I, what you're, what you're saying, there was no vote for the kiosk. If, if we voted for it and we said, do it, then obviously, yes, do it, but, but there wasn't a vote.
It was obviously talked about. It was talked about, when, when was it?
We, we talked about signage, but like that, it's funny that we're using this example, but that. We talked about, we need signage for Van Cleef. And mine had signage for Van Cleef, it was a sidewalk sign, saying Van Cleef with an arrow pointing to it and everything else. That would cost roughly five hundred dollars, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
And, and we talked about it, but we didn't see any bids, we never had a vote on it or whatever, it was discussion like, oh yeah, it'd be nice to have signs. For Van Cleef and then all of a sudden we have all these multi-thousand dollar kiosks that went up. Which was when we talked about it, not really what a lot of people had in mind, that's all we're saying.
The best example of this being unclear, where I, I, with respect to, I, I have made a bad decision. I thought I was getting, getting something good that would meet with general approval and I, I believe that it is well built.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
It's a, it's a good value on a solid black locust post that's gonna last a long time.
There's no doubt that.
They're quality product, but they, but they cost too much.
Yeah.
Um, and so uh. The whole community, council and neighbors and everyone deserve more follow-up along the way. You should have seen in uh, July. I've identified this product, it looked really cool. And the discussion might have been, it does, but it's too expensive, let's not. Um, and then I'd stop. Or um. The second step, we're ready for contract, we're about to buy this thing, are there any objections? And then to have said, no, I object, okay, we'll cancel it, we'll do something else. Um, well before they're here and, and that's clearly the problem. So I, I, while the, yes, the authority exists, um. That kind of project management is very important and as Mr. Payne said, failed on at least three occasions in the past year. And that's my fault.
And yeah, when we're talking about working on a budget that, you know, we're barely going by the skin of our teeth, making it, you know.
Well, I think that we should probably, I don't know the exact finalization date for the budget, but I would like to have more. Of an understanding of it, honestly, so I don't know if that means we do, you know, some extra meetings. And just really sit down and see, you know, what's expected.
And you know, just go back to what we said, you know, there's two, I think there's two decisions, what is approved in a project? And then approving the, the cost for that project, and I think there should be two votes, that's one. You say, okay, I like this project, it's, it's, you know, fifty thousand dollars, that's great, but if you say, I like this project. What does it cost? Then that should be the second vote.
I think maybe like three meetings, one, we just get a general understanding, we sit down with staff. And just, you know, see where everything's sitting and, you know, what funds are what and what money can be kind of moved around. The second meeting, we come and propose, you know, what do we wanna see, where do we, where do we wanna see more money, less money? And then a third meeting, we sit down and kind of finalize things and see where we wanna be with it.
I think, I, I mean, I would encourage you, or encourage us to, you get the government services involved. Though so much of our budgets, um, and have it filled with budgets and, you know, that is such a vital thing. It's such, such the most important thing in our town is really staying solid, people ask the other day, I'm a solid, I don't know. But uh, you know, and we have to make these cuts down and maybe we wouldn't have to make these cuts down. Have to be, have some oversight all along.
Just kind of look back at the agenda and realize how off topic we got.
No, not at all, we're, we're, we're.
Seventeen process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but I hope to see that we have budget down under, under four and I think that's kind of now what we're reaching into. And I feel like we're taking away in other ways.
Maybe we could talk about the.
Maybe when we, when we get to four, the video, we, the topic of that conversation is. We have a third meeting this month where we only talk about that.
Yeah, I think this is fantastic. Yes, yes, but if, if I, if I may, in, in concluding on the treasurer's report. Mr. Heisen, you raise a very important point, that you deserve to always be able to answer the public question of are we solvent? And this report does carry that answer, that we have almost half a million dollars in the bank now. It, it shows how much is in our checking account and how much is in our savings account. And it's on, it's on the front page of every one of these reports that you get every month and it says how much money we have. And, and in detail here is all of the revenue received for the year and all of the spending for the year. And it informs my projection for you that we will finish the current year in surplus. So we, we have almost half a million dollars in the bank and we will bring in more money than we spend this year. That net position will, will get better.
Well, could I get something the other day? Hundred thirty thousand dollars in debt.
A bigger pardon, um, uh. Could I, could I get into next, next budget? The, the difference between debt and deficit. So. Deficit is when you spend more than you make over a period of time. Debt is when all of your liabilities exceed all of your assets. We have four hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars in assets. We could run a hundred thousand dollar deficit five times for five years in a row before we ran out of money. Um, so. The dilemma that we face is in the upcoming year, where I think we, we, if we do, if we change nothing, we will spend more than we earn. But we could do that three times before we ran out of money. So the, the, it's a course correction problem and difficult decisions that need to be made about your goals. But we are in, we are in no danger of bankruptcy. Indeed.
Hey, anybody else? All right, um, I'm. Report is this, I've met with the chief and Matt talking about the budget, okay? Uh, mentioned the chamber board meeting. I met with Matt and Lisa on the planning commission matters and uh, goals that, that body may. Want to look at for the coming uh, year. I attended a Boys and Girls Club Advisory Committee meeting. I met with the owners of the new tobacco shop up at the shopping center, they. Got their business license, got their cigarette tax stamps and they're open for business. I met with Amy Lawford, the candidate, a candidate for the General Assembly. Uh, Matt and I met with Supervisor Price, talked about county issues. And I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Bowling over the last two weeks. So this is a good time to mention this. When the. General Assembly. Took steps to change our voting. From May to the general elections in November. They made several other changes too. And that, one of those concerns filling vacancies. So what essentially the short version is, we have a vacancy. If we appoint somebody to fill that vacancy, even though the vacancy was for a seat that ended in the, at the end of twenty twenty-four. The person that we appoint is good until the end of twenty twenty-three. And they have to have their name on the ballot in November for the general election. So they will have to take it upon themselves to register with, to get their name on the ballot. Also, that means that the ballot is open for write-ins or anybody else that wants to. Put their name on the ballot for that unexpired term. So if they appoint D does, uh, needs to know, go into this knowing that A, it's only until the end of the year. And B, that if they want to do next year, they're gonna have to get elected to do next year, okay? And they're not gonna be the only one on the ballot. The citizens have to have the opportunity to vote for the vacancy, fill the vacancy.
And I'm sure of that.
Yeah. Did I mentally leave out anything?
So somebody says, say, my turn expires in four, three, four years. I leave tomorrow, somebody takes my position. They don't go to three or four years, they just go till the end of this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have to be elected in November to fill out their term.
Does that make me eligible for the election as well? Or is it prior to them changing this?
Should Alex have been on? Should Alex have been on?
Well, that's what we're exploring, I didn't wanna bring that up at the moment because we haven't gotten a definite answer from the court.
I'll check.
And, and so we're, we're exploring that, you know, it's, it's one of those things, well, you know. If we don't do it, nobody's ever gonna know about it.
I hope to keep them. Then you're, you're good talk, no matter.
Yeah. And we do have, I don't know the name of the individual, we do have a fourth person interested in this vacancy, so we'll get into all that next week.
Okay, okay, but we're, we're all, we're all good with the interviews for closed session next week? Does that make sense to your agenda? Okay, go ahead and get that done, great. All right.
Can you give us the date for that, Matt?
Oh, next, next Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Is Mr. Bowling on the line?
He is, sir.
I am, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have any words for us?
Um, a couple of things. I, Matt ran the. AIR B and B ordinance by me and if you're gonna regulate those things, then you need to uh. Um, and if the town official is gonna be involved, you, you need to make sure that you're complying with public health and safety requirements. That is that the place that wants to do this should meet the bu, the building code and also should meet the FAR code. Cause otherwise you're hanging out to dry if something disastrous happens and bad things happen. And so that's the advice that I gave and we'll have to see what happens when the ordinance comes back before you. We continue to work on the recodification, which is a big project. The town's ordinances were last recodified in, uh, Matt, you helped me out, uh. What, the nineties?
We did a big recodification in the nineties and then batch updates every couple of years, but we stopped in two thousand eight.
So you really haven't had any change reflected, you have changes, but you haven't had your, your written code updated since two thousand and eight. And as some of you may know, I've been pushing to do this for, ever since I got here. And the reason it hadn't been done for so long is it, it costs uh, ten thousand dollars, is that right, Matt?
Yes, sir.
And it's, to my mind, it's worth the money, but uh, ten thousand dollars is a lot of money for the town of Scottsville. And you can do a lot of other things with ten thousand dollars and recodify your ordinances. But now you're finally doing it and so that, that process involves. Uh, plowing through is probably the right word, maybe I should use a better word, but plowing through four hundred pages of um. Very interesting but dense coat materials of the town of Scottsville. Um, in doing that, uh. One of the things that, that I've been also harping about is that your zoning ordinance is antiquated. And your, your subdivision ordinance is antiquated, what happened is back in. The late nineties, uh, you needed an update to your zoning ordinance and your subdivision ordinance. So you in toto adopted the Almar County's then current zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And that's not completely accurate, but, but pretty accurate. And you changed the county of Almar to town of Scottsville and then that's what you've got and that's what you've had since. And that's where, that's served you pretty well since then, largely because you really haven't had to need it. Uh, but um. Um, with your subdivision ordinance, that's a nuts and bolts kind of, 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 um, of ordinance. By that I mean that it's how wide your streets have to be and. Uh, you're, you're directing uh, planners and surveyors in the requirements of what the lot have to look like, what the streets have to look like. What the curbs look like, what the gutters look like, on and on and on. And, and so my opinion has been for many years, but now in particular is that you need an update at, at least of the subdivision ordinance. And again, it's the age-old dilemma with the town of Scottsville, you, you've got many things clamoring for your attention and. Um, what's needed and, and so how do we do that? And my suggestion is to find a good ordinance for a good town that, that meets the town's. Um, um, it's comparable to the town of Scottsville and just. Uh, uh, consider adopting that when you go to recodify the subdivision ordinance rather than. Adopting again this antiquated subdivision ordinance. Now, the third, the alternative is to go out on the market and, and get a consultant to help you do this, which is what people do. And uh, that's gonna be expensive and I think that's more than you have, so that's really not an acceptable alternative. Um, what, what, what do you estimate the cost of, of getting somebody to come in and do your subdivision ordinance is going to be, Matt? Would you say roughly?
That's, that's in line with one of those twenty, thirty thousand dollar consultant land use projects. You know, maybe we can research it on our own or put an intern on it. Mr. Bowling's recommendation is to try to find a best-in-class small-town peer that bit that bullet recently. And piggyback on what they have.
Do, do we have a? An in mind?
The, the one that I thought.
Trying to think of a town that we could copy it.
The, the one we brainstormed in our legal meeting was Middleburg in Loudoun County. They are um, quite wealthy and, and well-developed and have a lot of attractive balance between their historic and new development. But um, Mr. Bowling, I was not impressed with their ordinance. Uh, it was a little, a little better organized, but did basically the same thing. I was hoping that would be our answer and it didn't. It didn't seem that much easier to use. Um, so, so if they're, if we're looking for a good peer, the hunt continues.
All right, okay.
Sorry.
And now we're kind of in a time crunch for this one because of.
We're using it now.
Yeah, because of, yeah.
I have a question, uh, we, we have an ordinance, subdivision ordinance, uh, you know, we used it with Bird Street. Uh, there was fifty houses maximum without a second E rest.
Yes.
Is, is there, maybe you know, Mr. Bowling, is there something about apartments? That you could only have a certain amount of apartments without a second E rest or, or limitations? Do towns have limitations with apartments? Because what, and we had two hundred apartments, why not five hundred, why not eight hundred apartments? With the, is there limitations? That can be, you know, incorporated to limit the number of apartments that could be in a, in a place. Cause I. The ordinance amount.
The simple answer is of course.
So we can make an ordinance about that.
Well, within.
If there's, if the apartments, you have to have a second E rest, we could, or just add that into what we have now.
Right, I, well, I say right, I think you can, everything you do. It's a mosaic, you're talking about the zoning ordinance now and I was talking about the subdivision ordinance, okay? They're completely, they're not even apples and oranges, they're different, they're different animals, okay? All right, so if you're talking to the subdivision ordinance is a technical ordinance, okay? It's, it's not deciding, uh. You can put a gas station here or you can have a residence here or how big it has to be or how many you can have. It's, it's, it's the nuts and bolts of the planning process is carried out by the professional engineer and, and the surveyor. Matt, maybe you can describe what a subdivision ordinance is better than I can, since you have to deal with it.
That sounds pretty good, what is, what does the engineer need to do in order to start splitting up the lots?
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I'm having really hard time phrasing my words.
No worries.
If somebody comes before us, as we know is about to happen next month with planning commission. And we have one ordinance on the books. Once that has been presented to planning commission, can we change the ordinance? Or do we have to hurry up and change this ordinance before Southern comes before planning commission next month?
Yep.
With, with their proposal.
Yeah, but, but see, you're misunderstanding what, what's, what Matt told you. That's a by right development and, and I don't think that's gonna make much difference one way or the, the other as far as two acre lots go. And what they're proposing, Matt, do you?
I think it's a, it's a, it's a good basic point of land use law. If, if they apply under current ordinance, which says that a, a. On-street parking space, parallel parking has to be twenty feet long. And we change that rule after they apply, but before it gets approved. And now we say twenty-one feet and we throw off their numbers. Do they have to go back to square one or do we judge it under the rules that were in place when they applied?
Because of the fact that subdivision ordinance in place right now.
Stuck.
We're, we're stuck like. You try to hurry up and find another one.
Right, but you're misunderstanding what I was saying, maybe I alarmed you too much, your subdivision ordinance is antiquated, but it's adequate, you know? That's basically what I'm saying. But, but it's, but you know, if you, if you're gonna do something, you should bring it up to the twenty-first century is what I always say. Um, and it then, and that's something that I've been proposing for over ten years, nothing's happened yet, so. So, uh, but it's adequate for what's been proposed, which is your run-of-the-mill two-acre lot. And, and probably when you think about it, Almar County was, uh, regulating two-acre lots to the maximum amount.
They were. They're intense regulations.
Yeah, back in, uh, back in nineteen, in the late nineteen nineties, as they, as they continue to do today. So you're, you're not really losing much for the two-acre lot kind of situation.
We were mostly lamenting how hard it was to use. It's sixty pages. Couldn't we possibly get something cleaner? To, to help the planning commission, not least to navigate what we're using. If we could, if we could word it better, so it was twenty pages instead of sixty, everyone would be happier.
Yeah. So I, I didn't mean to give you the impression that what you have is not adequate, okay? It's just that it could be improved.
Any other questions from Mr. Bowling?
I've, uh, got, got some more. On the, on the election thing, you'll, you'll need to, uh, make a decision within forty-five days. As, as, as one of your members pointed out, if you don't, then the judge makes the decision. And then, uh, uh, the, 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 the way that the code was changed is that, uh, uh, the, the special, it's a special election, it has to be held, uh, uh, not later than the next general election, which is in November of this year. Uh, prior to that time, that, the, the, uh, the town, the general assembly had a provision in the Code of Virginia, which said that, uh, uh, any town under two thirty-five hundred and, and people, um, uh, that, when there was a vacancy, the, uh, person appointed by the town council, remained in office for the length of the term, which is the same as the town's charter provision now, okay? So you've got dueling laws in effect here. Uh, so what has to happen now is that you've got a, uh, a special election, which will be held with the next general election. And at that time, as the mayor stated, uh, anybody can, uh, throw their hat into the ring if they want to run for the position. And then the poorest, the poor individual has to turn around and run again uh, in two thousand twenty-four. And that's what the general assembly's decided, and, uh, that's basically what we have to do.
I have a, I have a question. Uh, I got your email today. I, I have a question about the reviewing, uh, annual evaluations of employees.
Right.
Do, but do you recommend that we should just get a, like, for a town council, just to get approval somehow, or should we have a policy about that?
Well, no, you need to change your personnel policy. And it's, it's, it's more complicated than I did in my email. It's, it's, this is a complicated area because you have, you have a federal privacy act of nineteen seventy-four, which basically says that if you have a data, uh, record system, individuals, uh, which, which counties and cities and towns in Virginia do, and you keep information about a person, that person has federal rights under that data system, and you have to comply with them. And when somebody's going to look at the, that information, he has to be informed of that. Then you have a state privacy act, used to be called the Virginia Privacy Act, and that kind of made sense. But now it's called the, uh, Virginia Government Data Collection and Dissemination Practices Act, which, uh, Virginia, uh, uh, adopted. Um, at first they started out with the Privacy Act, now they've got this Dissemination Act, which basically does the same thing that the old act does. It says that individuals have certain rights, uh, for the information that, that county, cities, and towns collect on them, and that those rights have to be respected, and that gives, it gives the individual, um, injunctive and injunctive rights, if those rights are violated. So you have to be careful what you're doing here. And, and you need to think about what you want to do and why. I think that, um, uh, most of the places that I know, uh, restrict the access of personnel files to the, um, immediate administration, uh, for reasons which I tried to, uh, talk about a little bit in the, in the email. Uh, that may be right and that may be wrong. I'm just laying out the reasons that, that I discovered that they do it. Town here, of course, doesn't have a huge number of employees. I think for many, many years, all they've had is three. And, and one of those employees, I'm not certain, uh, may be exempt from anything you do, because I'm not sure what he's paid. If he's paid under ten thousand dollars, he's not subject to a lot of the things that you may want to do. So you may be talking about two employees here instead of three. I don't know. So, uh, basically, there's a process, and if you want town counselors to, uh, have a, be able to look at personnel files, you need to amend your current personnel policy. And there's a procedure in personnel policies for doing that. I don't know if that helped you or not, sir.
Uh, I still agree. I mean, but yeah, it sounds like a lot of work just to be able to, to see some just basic information and see, and see if it's even being done and see what was said. That's all. I mean, I don't, I don't, it's already, it's about, uh, looking through their files, particularly as much as looking at their performance.
Right, right. I understand. I've got to talk about unless you have any questions.
Anymore?
I have a question. Um, I'm assuming at some point tonight, we're gonna hopefully, uh, schedule a meeting for, uh, the budget for, for the twenty-four, um, year. I'm looking at last year's, the annual resolution of appropriations of the town of Scottsville.
Yeah.
Section two? No idea, the legalities. Before that meeting happens, would you be able to look at section two of that from the last year's? And kind of put it in layman's terms for us before that meeting? Maybe it's just like one page?
I'll, I'll be happy to send that to you, sir, and, um, and we can talk through it. I've mostly kept that as boilerplate, so I, um, off, offhand, I, I don't know why the text is the way it is.
Yeah, that was to, to get ready for about this year's budget.
Right.
And when I was reading it, I realized I had zero idea what I'm reading.
Right, but that's important and gets to some of our questions about what spending authority are you giving?
Yeah.
Uh, and what does this appropriation do?
Yeah.
Good, good point. I'll, um, I'll, I'll share those with you, um, Mr. Bowling, and we can talk through their, their tax details.
I'm not sure I know what you're talking about. You'll have to show me.
It's, it's the ordinance of appropriations when we vote on the budget.
Oh, okay.
It has a particular form, and I, I don't know much of the history of why it has that form.
Well, it's probably been gaunt, has that form because that's the way it's been done forever.
Indeed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowling. You have anything else, Matt?
I, I think most of this staff work of the past month comes in our, our action item discussions. A couple of things that I've, I've been participating in that are not on here. There's a, um, a substantial regional grant that our planning commission won from the U.S. Economic Development Administration for comprehensive economic development strategy. Um, if we make this regional strategy about our economic development goals, it opens up another column of federal economic development grant money. And our, historically, our region has not done a very good job of identifying shared goals. You know, what, what Charlottesville and Nelson County have in common for economic development, and so we've missed out on that. Um, the Planning Issue Commission is now, um, launching that process and has recruited, uh, a pretty wide range of economic development stakeholders to be on a planning team. So I'm, I'm included in that and was happy to be there today. I will, um, try to represent the town's shared economic development goals. And as council is able to articulate key businesses that you want to try to recruit, or what do we do with our industrial zone property? I'll make sure that that's represented in the regional plan and try to recruit as much, um, state and federal funding help as we can, whether it's, um, entrepreneurship, workforce development classes, business improvements. The projects could take all kinds of, uh, forms. But I want to, it's a good example of us, um, showing up at the table and representing for this part of the region. I took a look at, um, some quick turnaround grant funding from the AARP. They have an interesting large grant program for community improvements and healthy aging. Um, what they were asking for was fairly flexible, but didn't line up really well with anything that was currently in our budget. So I, on a deadline, I didn't have the ability to just say, you know, this is something that we already want, and they're willing to pay for it, so let's go ahead and apply. I recommended it, um, pass that ball to Piedmont Housing Alliance, maintaining the Scottsville School Apartments. And they thought they might be able to use it for some improvements on their property. Um, so I'm not sure if they'll apply, but it's a good example of sometimes we can't make a grant work, especially on a, on a quick deadline. But the least we can do is give the introduction to someone else. I am, uh, as you mentioned on subdivision ordinance, sometimes we, um, share ideas around the state and try to piggyback on others' good ideas. Um, I will be, um, spending, uh, all day Thursday and part of Wednesday and Friday at our statewide local government managers conference, which is in Harrisonburg. Um, I'm, uh, chairing a panel on, um, the future of the younger local government managers in the state. Some gray hair, but I think I still qualify as one of those. Um, so the, the more experienced managers kind of mentoring us and talking about how the workplace may need to change for a younger generation of leaders. Um, it's good exchange and, um, happy to, um, network and see what I can learn there. That's all, sir.
Any other questions from Matt? Let's start down with four D land use reports and upcoming public hearings.
Would you like to join us? Thank, thank you both so much.
Um, Matt, if you want to have that presentation.
Sure, take a seat wherever you're comfortable, man.
Um, I know most of you, but I, I wrote as a resident of SCAN for four years, uh, and now working on the SCAN land. And, uh, I gave you a, a sense of what I'm proposing today. Um, currently the land is still in the presidential, and, um, we're asking, we're requesting that zoning be adjusted to Arts and Education Center. Um, this presentation is about ten minutes long. It has images. If you have um, any questions, please, uh, ask. Uh, the, the purpose or the objective of the presentation is to give context. Um, to give you a sense of the community's investment in the project and to give you a sense of the groundwork that's been laid over the past three years. Um, there are two videos that I will play. Um, and actually, Matt, you can just click on them now so that, and then pause them so they don't have time to load.
Sure.
Um, so just a little bit of background information, and I know Nancy's on there, and maybe she could also speak to this if she wanted to. But this, the Arts and Education Center was, uh, for zoning was, uh, created by both SCAN, and actually, Ron, you can probably speak to this too. Uh, was created both with SCAN and the town council back in two thousand and five. Um, is that correct?
Uh, I came here in seven, and it was about, uh, two thousand and eight or so.
Two thousand and eight.
They started getting serious about putting a, a performing, performing arts center. So that's how long that's been going on.
So this has been, uh, this zoning was specifically created for the SCAN land. Um, as Ron said, in two thousand and eight with SCAN and the town council. Um, so that's how long this, uh, has been in works. Um, but then I'll, I'll be able to give you a sense of the most recent groundwork that um, so it is, uh, thirteen point one two acres. So Matt, if you would go to the first slide.
This one?
Uh, no, the, yeah, that one.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, and I'm going to read, but also speak. I just want to read so I don't forget any of the permit. Scottsville Center for the Arts and the Natural Environment, or SCAN, is requesting that the town of Scottsville grant approval for a special use permit for the thirteen point one two acres on Harbor Street. Currently, the land is, uh, at the presidential. Uh, and Matt, you can go to the next slide. SCAN is requesting that the zoning be adjusted to Arts and Education Center. This, the change in permitting would allow for arts and environmental education programming to be accessible to the public, meaning our community of the intersection of three counties and invaluable resource. So all of the maps were created by this SCAN team, uh, so that they can give you a sense, a visual sense of what we're talking about. You can go to the next slide. Okay. Updating this permit would include, but not be limited to hosting vehicles, teaching B P P, creating and maintaining trails to navigate the fields and forests, and connecting to the already public Banff Leaf Nature Trail that sits adjacent to the SCAN land. And I know that, uh, Dan Chrisso sent an email earlier today talking a little bit about this, um, and the relationship that he with the Banff Leaf Nature Trail and SCAN have had in the past, um, decade. Um, slide four, great, thanks. Updating this permit would also allow for SCAN to host visual programming such as outdoor sculpture located at the orange circles, uh, that already exist. And I can go, I'll go into detail a little bit more about this to add to the collection of public art in Scottsville. In addition, it would give SCAN the ability to host performing arts programming by potentially building a small outdoor amphitheater to host small theater performances and musicals. This presentation intends to give you a sense of the physical context of the SCAN land. And again, as I said, the community investment. Next slide. Uh, so this is the diagram you'll see a couple times. Um, it's repeated, but it's really just to give you a sense of uh, where we have been, where we are, and where we're going. Uh, in addition to SCAN's and the commu- communities' investment in the project, um, with the community's feedback, SCAN has developed a five-year plan and helping to here. Uh, these are the tasks and events we have accomplished thus far. So, um, the C A C F grant, um, which supported a community survey, which received over two hundred responses, uh, from the community. Um, and a participatory design workshop, which again, uh, the community was able to come onto the land and give feedback on what they wanted to see. A sculpture installation, um, these were donations given by the faculty and students. Um, Virginia Outdoorists Fund grant, the twenty-five thousand dollar grant that, uh, will allow for, uh, several developments on the land, so signage, dramatic design, and trail building, um, and trail building, and then two-week birthday events and cleanup efforts and holiday event. In twenty twenty, redesigning the SCAN land was sponsored by a grant from the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation. So that is that, uh, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars that contributed to, um, uh, the digital communication branding and tools, uh, which included redesign of reaching out to the community to get feedback. Uh, these are some of the, um, representations of what the, the community was interested in. Um, and you can see more, uh, visual representations of this on SCAN's website. And this was done during COVID, um, at the moment that we were still fearful of getting together, so that's why we did this on. And that's why the branding was valuable, because, um, we, we wanted to give a consistent face to the community. The C A C F grant also allowed us to do so workshop for meeting members to come, walk in, really, really get a sense of the space and get more feedback. Making time and energy and being invested in what's happening on the street. The idea is that we get feedback from you that will then help us redesign this space. If the public is not invested in what you're designing, then they're not going to be invested in the law. Really important that we hear from you all about what you see that happened.
I think it's really important that the people in the community are involved in the design.
I think it's really important that the people in the community are involved in the design process, and it's also really exciting for the possibility of something to be added to our community. It, it's nice to be part of, you know, knowing something or trying to build something. You know, out, out of all that.
Yeah, when I heard that there was public land and they were taking it, but I got really excited. So I think it's really important to design with the community, um, and see what people want rather than kind of projecting your own interest.
Reminds me of being a couple of people, beautiful, the natural, the natural swell down there and the idea that you could have a very simple, uh, even with the, if you've gone the grass, it's just the natural idea of an open.
Incorporating something that would invite the art and nature. You know, like we said, when you're doing.
It's, uh, something that fits the natural space there, as we build, you know, building. It doesn't have to be big, but there's something you can get out of the sun or the rain.
Thank you.
And you can jump to the next slide. So in two thousand and twenty-one, UVA students and faculty donated, donated sculptures from their outdoor movie room exhibition. Next slide. And helped Scan volunteers install them for permanent display on the land.
So they're there?
Yeah.
Oh. Is it in total or public?
No, that's why I'm here.
Oh. I thought that would have, I, I. It would, would have been.
Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, Scan received a progress grant from the, via Virginia Outdoor Foundation to accomplish phase one. Uh, we have approximately until the end of two thousand and twenty-three to complete signage away finding and preliminary trail building on the land that the community has requested. Slide, please.
Hey, would that be, would that be your phase one?
That would be phase one, okay. Um, in April of two thousand and twenty-two, Scan hosted a townwide earth day event with the help from local businesses, businesses and sponsors. Uh, Bartlett Tree Experts Green Infrastructure Center and Alamo Stone Works were integral to, um, developing, uh, the, the pathways within the forest, uh, uh, an objective and a goal that has been um, there since, I think, uh, two thousand and seven at least. And individual volunteers have helped us realize the dreams of creating trails through this Scanland Forest for public use. We had over, um, I would say seventy-five volunteers who helped us over, uh, a two-week period with this project. In addition, you can, oh, yeah, thank you. In addition, the land maintenance scan also hosted programs in celebration of birthday. And as a B city, Scan is a nonprofit partner with the town of Scottsville. Through this designation, we are required to host an event each year in celebration of Pollinator Day. In two thousand and twenty-two, we hosted it on the Scanland in partnership with these local businesses. Here, we hosted arts and environmental programs for our community. For the Pollinator Day event, we partnered with Silver Pollinator Company, who helps us manage our hides on the Scanland through the Nectar Share Program. Which contrib- where contributions from other beekeepers help fund Silver Pollinator Company's hive inspections and maintenance. So essentially, they receive donations, and those donations go to maintaining Scan's house. You can go ahead and start it. In two thousand and four, Robert K. Bobby Spencer donated these thirteen acres to Scan. In this donation, he requested this land remain natural. At Scan, we see this special use permit to guarantee a public outdoor group is accessible to all in our community while staying loyal to our mission to inspire and foster exploration of nature and parks. You all have any questions?
Sure, this is a, a, a large park, a public park.
That.
There's no plans for any kind of, uh, building.
Well, so originally, the, in two thousand and seven, the intention was to, um, change the zoning, so there would be a large visual performing arts building.
Oh.
It was designed, and I think Nancy told me it, it totaled over five, seven million dollars or something like that.
I can, I don't remember two millions in the figure, but it was something that can.
Something that can.
The Scan could not afford it.
So, um.
So there won't be a building?
Well, I'll, I'll say this, though, um, when I came on as president, the intention was to ask the community what they wanted. And, and they said they wanted a park that had an amphitheater and lots of features. And it, it, um, it innately leans towards that because it's connected to the Van Cleve Nature Trail, and it's part of this sort of larger objective of a larger green infrastructure within Scottsville. Mm, my job here today is not to say building or no building, because really, my understanding is if this zoning is shifted to Arts and Education Center, a building still can be built. My objective is to, um, give you a sense of the groundwork, number one. Number two, ask that the zoning be changed until we, we are in this moment, um, based on that phase being interested in making that happen.
Do you have another zone kind of doing this?
Yeah, yeah, this is what was created. Yeah.
Then, then it opens up to possibly a, a, a built well.
It does, yeah.
So what's it called?
It is called Arts and Education Center.
So, in other words, we drop everything, light, industrial, residential, village, residential, and all that.
Not quite, sir. Um, the, the base zoning stays village residential. This is a specific type of use that requires a special use permit, so it's comparable to, um, like a daycare center.
So we're not creating new zoning, um, grouping that we're especially just, that's allowed it, so it can be used.
That's, that's right. This is a special use permit application.
That'll result.
Correct.
Okay. Got her re-zoning. Do that. And this, as far as so, I guess, yeah, takes the whole, it's just still time base.
Correct. It is not a town property. It's.
We call for a special hearing, a public hearing next week, next month.
You have your public hearing next week and could dispose of the issue then. This work session helps to get informed in advance of the public hearing.
Let me, I got, what, what, like, if you do an amphitheater, you, I guess you have plays or music, things like that. So would, would, uh, the neighbors would have to know about that, I don't think, or there'd have to be some sort of good answer to the, uh, this, the noise warnings.
Yeah, and I, I, I'd like to speak to that too. Um, we've done outreach to the neighbors. Uh, the neighbors directly, you know, the adjacent, but also, uh, the local, the Union Baptist Church to find out what they'd be interested in having on the land because they're so close and they're limited with land. Um, and neighbors adjacent said, y'all have been talking about this for years. Do whatever you want. So, um, you know, that obviously doesn't speak directly to the noise awareness, but, uh, I will tell you that they, they, um, were interested in whatever and was interested in creating.
So are clients for water or electrical there?
So there is water there. There's a pond there, and there, you know, only created streams. We would not, as an environmental organization, uh, currently, the objective is not to put uh, any, um, city water. The idea would be that it is self-maintained and, uh, it power needed, you know? But essentially, when we're talking about bathrooms, we're talking about composted toilets instead of, um, instead of.
Just to know exactly what the special use permit is asked for.
I, I think I can help, because we, we had some question from the applicant about whether they needed to do this. Right now, the property is zoned village residential. And there is a limit to the kind, uh, the number and kind of events that can be held on a village residential zoned property, you know? And anyone can throw a party at their house, and I think that what they've done on this site so far is consistent with that. You know, a small gathering of friends to build something in the backyard or have a meeting of neighbors, so there's no zoning violation there. If they increased the number of these events with, uh, uh, intensive community gardening that was open to more people or, um, more frequent concerts and festivals, there would come a point where that wasn't consistent with residential zoning anymore, and we'd have a zoning enforcement problem. It might also impact their design and fundraising efforts. It's normal for a grant agency to say, is your property suitably zoned for the thing you want to do? And the answer to that might be no. So the, the town wrote these regulations fifteen years ago with this property in mind and then never followed through on issuing the permit. So that's why I recommend go ahead and apply for this permit now, and then there won't be any more zoning enforcement problems in the future as you complete your event plans.
And it's an appropriate time because we're in phase one, we're going to do a phase two or four.
Okay, well, I'm, I must admit, I'm not speaking on this exact project, although I have really, they've been giving to me. Um, I'd, I'd like to see, um, a copy of that, those presidential zoning. I'd like to see a copy, like, of the application, the special use permit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and any proposals that you might have, you know, to attach to that. Um, just to see where, where we go and.
If, if, if I understand correctly, the way it is currently zoned, and Matt, please correct me a moment. What they can do by writing is substantially more than what they're asking. You know, like you were asking about water and electricity and, and stuff like that, um. I, I think this is a, a great way to kind of keep the land natural and, and keep it. I, i- if I, if I'm understanding Bill's questions before, definitely, I mean, I, I think this is a great way to keep it a park and a, you know, less developed, more natural center for people to enjoy.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm supposed to, I mean, it didn't specify that it can be kept natural. Um, of course, if, yeah, Scan violates this, um, request, what happens to the land then? There's no legal thing to reverse back to his family or anything. You are retained. So basically, you, you police yourself there. But, yeah, it's being beneficial, uh, as opposed to something hazardous if people.
Yeah.
I think the other thing I'm confused on is, uh, the public access to it at this point. Is that gonna be monitored by Scan? You know, is, is there gonna be a time when people are allowed to be there, or is it just gonna show up? You talked about it being, uh, adjacent to Van Cleve. Are people from Van Cleve gonna be able to walk over there and kind of explore and do?
You, oh, actually, I can show you here. Um, the, the Van Cleve Trail is here.
Mm-hmm.
The sewer easement trail and the entrance that actually we currently have it assigned for, uh, it's just a temporary sign for one of, um, the workshops is here. And, um, so, so there, there's direct access to, um, the Scanland from Van Cleve. There's also direct access from Harbor Street. Um, one of the arguments that was made in the V O F grant was that this was a, uh, the Van Cleve nature or the sewer easement trail was a great way to be able to, um, walk to Scanland as opposed to going, um, down Harbor Street. So, um, you asked me specifically about public ac- access. So currently, we do not have a permanent sign on the property. Once a permanent, permanent signage is created, we will also have a sign that, um, states that those visiting are liable if, if they, if they are to get hurt. And that's a large part of making it up there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as in this, truthfully, um, as in this S U P. So the first step is to get the S U P, um. We have liability insurance. We would install those signs along with, uh, signage sustaining that's in Scanland because nobody would know. Um, actually, I mean, for any event, we have to put up a lot of signs and even to get a quarter potty delivered, I have to stand up there and wave my arms, uh, because we don't have any. And that has been intentional up until this point because we wanted to go through this S U P process before we, we installed that.
Is that the entrance, I mean, is that where, is there gonna be a, a, oh, the driveway there?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's gonna be paved or is it gravel or?
It would, it would be either permeable payers or ground. Currently, it's grass. No grass.
It's a, I'm just curious. Just a few years. Is there, have there been people? Maybe vandalism, we've had some vandalism around here sometimes, ruining these sculptures and something, painting it or something. I just wanted, so that's, uh, sure, but, I mean, it could happen.
It could happen. It could happen.
I mean, once it opens up, once it opens up, people, people with their spray cans would wanna, you know, make their mark sometimes.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, you know, of course, these are sculptures that were donated by students, and they're very aware that they're a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Um. I, I'm also very aware that vandalism is a concern and definitely a thought about it. I prefer to give people the benefit of the doubt that if we are in tr- contributing to the public realm with something that is um. That adds to their landscape, whether it be their, their green landscape or their buildings. Just as we've done, just as scan done on buildings, then they're less likely to feel the need to vandalize. But, you know, of course, there's always.
I mean, art is important and you don't want to deny an entire community art because we're afraid some idiot teenager, you know. May or may not have an induced something.
I, I've probably spent the most time on that property of anyone who's not a scan board member. Um, because scan has a little bit more flexibility in how they can use their property compared to town parks. So, I don't have a backyard, but I enjoy traditional archery. And I can't target shoot on town public parks because we have weapons restrictions. Scan gave me permission to target shoot on that land when there's no one else there. And some of my most peaceful memories in Scottsville um, come from relaxing there by myself with my bow.
Can I answer your question?
Pretty much, yeah, I just wanna, I'm kinda. Stumped here on, is there an obligation? You know, as far as you were talking about liability from the town, are we gonna assume any, anything to do, or, and there's no financial obligation, you gotta cover everything?
It is scanned property.
Okay.
It has been since two thousand four.
Okay.
There is no obligation for the town. It, it is simply a permitting.
Okay, and so, then kind of back to my first question. If I decide one day to go walk up there and, you know, enjoy the place. It's open to the public in that aspect as well, just like Van Cleve nature area would be.
Well. We need you all to approve this S U P in order to move forward with that objective. So yes, that the intent is to make it a public park, but we can't do that without, without updating the S U P.
They try to get a insurance policy.
Yeah.
And, but they, they have difficulty with that because it's not sound appropriately.
Well, we can, like I said, review the village industrial. So. Review the actual S U P in writing. Then you, uh, if, if not. If that is done before the public hearing, you will have a public hearing next week.
Oh, of course, you'll have it tomorrow. You'll have it tomorrow, yes, sir.
Well, you all actually, last meeting, I think we wrote it not having a public hearing, am I correct about that?
Uh, the hearing is um, Tuesday. We have to have the public hearing before issuing the permit. So what, what they did was call that hearing for. This coming Tuesday.
Okay. Okay, maybe I misunderstood, this was what we.
And there was a, there was a request, um. The last meeting, full some information, but we. We, we didn't get right into it. I think just, just that, that, you guys got a chance to prepare it.
Thank you.
Um. We've scheduled a public hearing. When that.
You, I beg your pardon, you, you, um, last month you voted to hold the public hearing on this, on this coming Tuesday. After that hearing, you're under no obligation to vote immediately if there's more review that you want to do.
Not, 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 we'll vote, just one. We, you know, for the lifestyle.
That's right.
Any other questions for Eric? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So on Monday?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Matt, you wanna lead us into the second half of this four D?
Yes, yes, and I, I got a, a few more details from. Ms. Radley in, in writing today. She sent us her apologies that she couldn't um, join us, but she was able to correct a couple of things on my understanding.
She called me and asked it to be table till next month also.
Called me and asked me to be tabled.
Everything, you're all better informed than me, very good. Sure.
I, I, I. She did about the whole thing and she gave me a vote back, probably disagree with that. The special one thing, but.
Would you like to just pass on the work session discussion or talk about it some right now?
I think we should pass on it because I actually, mine wasn't email, it was actually on the phone.
Okay.
And she made it sound like. She doesn't have all, yeah, it sounds like she called everybody. It sounds like she doesn't have all of her ducks in a row.
Okay.
And she wants some time to put some more stuff together.
Sure. No, that's a, that's a good idea. As you, as you saw, it helps when the applicant can, can prepare all of this detail and answer all these questions, so she'd like to do the same thing.
So like, yeah, I did that, you know.
Yeah.
You know, she didn't, she didn't have all the back figures and she didn't think that we did.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah. It's not going anywhere.
But um. She asked, uh, do you have any problem with us, you know, going for, after next work, saying next month, she said, no. I mean, you're all got.
Yeah, I have the same question I got. She just wanted to get some more stuff together before you all talk about it.
Great, I continue to learn about the history of all this, so it's helped me too.
Not in the loop.
She's got, I know she's got my number, but she's called several times.
Great.
Well, while we didn't plow the snow off of the driveway in front of her garage.
I didn't play a lot of those.
Fair enough.
All right, let's go to item four A. Mr. Wallace, we're gonna kind of explain, Matt and I talked about this one, but there's, it needs to be something everybody talks about.
Um, it, yes, sir, it's um. Very important for the work of um, all of our staff and committees. For our budgeting and for town council's cohesion, that we be clear on your overall vision and strategy for the town. Um, planning commission got into this at their meeting last week, thinking about their comprehensive plan work. Um, it, it starts with an overall vision. And commissioners were reluctant to proceed on, you know, updates evaluating the past comp plan and, and updating a new one. Without checking in with town council first about, you know, what is it that we share? And especially given the degree of council turnover in the past um, two to four years. Uh, it's very fair that this group now has um, different goals. Than what was um, shown the last time we did strategic planning work or what was shown in our comp plan. Uh, so that, that goal setting's um, very important. And the um, the last work session uh, included consent for uh, a special meeting on the subject. Which can certainly get into budgeting as well, very closely linked to the topic of. What are our goals and priorities is how much do those, might those things cost and how many of them can we do uh, with the resources that we have? Um, so I did some work on um. Scoping a facilitated uh, planning meeting to take a, take a Saturday and get some facilitator help to run that meeting. Council did this very successfully in twenty eighteen and it laid out two years worth of priorities, which got us to the beginning of COVID. And we didn't repeat that kind of facilitated exercise in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. It feels urgent to do now.
Well, well, I think, talk a little bit about having, you know, I think it's a great. I think she, she did a good start for that and then needed someone after that to be fine, but I think she's willing to do that. And uh, having a, uh, strategic planning meeting with her and that council. Try to do that at our, we need to see what her, you know. And see how that goes, but I don't think we need. Have a planning commission involved, so we, so we're to get us. What's the cost of the town?
This is a four thousand dollar proposal from U V A's Institute of Government.
So we, we're asking, we're paying someone to tell them to save your money. Uh, I can't see.
Well, that's, no, I think strategic plan was the other.
After having strategic planning meeting, and I'm all for Eileen doing it for Gray, if, if she's. You know, qualified for that, but my question is. She's one of the. Um. Candidates, candidates to, to become a, a counselor next week, so that might index. That, you know what I mean, that, and I, I think that would.
I wonder if she got maybe this. I mean, I think, uh, still the objective. Put your, your input in as well as getting everybody else's input. I don't know if that really.
Why not both?
But.
Maybe we do something with Eileen first and if we don't feel it, it's a satisfactory, you know, experience and we want something more, then we reapproach U V A.
Yeah, that's a good.
And uh. Yeah.
I believe the planning commission should be involved in this. We're all there and hit, in, in it together and it's no need to have the council on one wavelength and the planning commission on another. When there might be a middle wavelength there where we can work from both of the town together. And we need, they need to know what we're thinking, they, we need to know what they're thinking.
Maybe a couple hours of just town council and then a couple hours of the planning commission?
That's what it should be. They should, so be so separate and, and then get together. I don't think it should be that, you guys are pretty usually.
That's right, you work on a lot of things that they don't.
I think of a long meeting where it's just us for a while and then. Cancelled, then planning commission comes in for the second half of it.
Sure.
Let's all go on a beach retreat. And um, we're there, just, and catch play that sells. Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Few days in the sunshine.
Someone got a beach hat we can use.
Maybe that's something to give up about at the end of the year, but when they do that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we, we did well with a um. A Saturday in the library conference room previously, you know, different space than this, but not, you know, um. Not having to pay for a um, resort, you know.
Matt, you wanna get that, details of that worked out?
Okay.
Time, please.
Okay, if um, if you know that you have um. Weekend commitments in the next couple of months and there are certain Saturdays that you know are bad. By all means, send me those and I'll try to avoid, um, it's important that everybody did. No, I'd be looking out at, you know, March or April to, to get set.
Is this something we should open up to the public too, just to kind of get a. Feel of what people were thinking and care about.
It will be a public event. Um, it's, it's up to you. You know, is this something where, you know, the seven of you just want to huddle on your own, or is there a kind of a. Survey that you might want to do beforehand, or. It's, it's up to you.
After uh, Walter. Spoke at, at the. When was it, December?
Yeah.
How upset he was that.
Nobody ever asked him.
Nobody ever, I, I'm all for a survey type thing before the. Before the meeting, just so we have a better sense. I'm, I'm all up for even um. A mailer. Old school, that emailer, like old school. Send a piece of paper with, you know, which. Issues are important to you, you can check one, two and three, leave a blank spot for them to write in and. Either, I, like have drop off places, you know, have a box that, you know, here and.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
And com- compared.
Pains or whatever, where they can just drop their things and then we go collect them.
Co- compared to four thousand dollars of facilitation, would you be interested to spend four hundred dollars on postage and papers?
Yeah. I, I.
It's definitely something we're looking to.
You know, when, when we make a very genuine attempt to involve people. And we put out there on Facebook and we put out there, you know, in newsletter, you know, whatever. That this is going on, this is what we're asking for. What was that questionnaire about the? Um. Higher plant that happened years ago, there was a word for it, we use. And I forget what it is. Remember when they asked everybody what they wanted to see in the town?
Yes, I do remember that.
That's a small area plan?
No, there was, it was a, it was a survey, basically, but then after that went out. Everybody was like, well, I didn't know about this, I never saw a survey, you know. It's so hard to reach everybody despite how hard you try to reach everybody.
Doing the small area plan and we all took, like, into town and went door to door, putting brochures in the door, handing to the people. Firstly, we still ask people to say, I didn't know anything about it.
Really have a very good website, I think. And you always feel like I do today.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, I, I think, I think. A little money spent on postage so that we could say we literally hit every single resident in Scottsville wouldn't give me go on this.
And it, is it, does our town have an actual official Facebook, or is it? Okay.
Well, it's, it's less popular than.
I was gonna say, it might be smart to start some conversations in that other Facebook group.
Updated.
Maybe on average weekly, uh, I, to kind of keep it active, I'll reshare community information like from. When there's a, a forest fire warning or a special recycling day. Um, I shared a housing survey today, um, and then when we need to do a community announcement about. The office being closed or a festival coming up, we have traffic on that, but it's fewer followers than what the community groups have, for sure.
Well, of course, you're talking about Facebook.
Yeah.
On our website, um, I know it's. Okay, well, just like for today, um, at, at meeting, it's written scheduled for Monday.
I'll fix the calendar, good, good catch.
Yeah, and um, the January. Seventeenth YouTube video of twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-two was posted.
Beg your pardon? Is the date, like the date, date label's wrong?
Well, the twenty-three, not only the twenty-two, it is in the twenty-three's place.
The actual meeting or?
January fifteenth, twenty-three, and. Our capital meeting is not on YouTube, but it is placed January seventeenth of twenty-two.
Okay.
In other words, somebody goes in looking for the last capital meeting.
Okay.
And I think it's, you know.
Is that genuinely twenty, did we watch it though? Is it just dated incorrectly or is it?
Uh, I just saw twenty-two.
Okay.
Thanks, I didn't recognize.
But that's on my, that's on my YouTube channel?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll fix that.
You go to your website, it says towns and meetings and such, and then YouTube link and click on that. And they're all analog, or, this being the latest.
Okay.
But it's not actually the latest, it's um. Well, apparently. But that's two things I noticed.
Okay, thank you.
As other gen, I'm sorry, so I may just say that. I think that.
Dan, is he? That's true.
It is just misstated. It is January seventeen, twenty-three.
What year I was in.
It's just misstated.
Well, that's an easier fix. Got it, thank you.
I just pulled it up and.
Just out of curiosity, do you know what our viewership is on our YouTube? I don't, it doesn't really have to do with anything, I'm just curious if you know.
They have hit counts, um, I don't, don't sweat them.
Yeah.
There might have been one that's gotten over a hundred.
Last week. Last month.
Mo- mostly pretty low traffic. They, they um. The happiest customer on those videos is Javier, it helps them, helps them with the minutes a lot, to be able to go back and see exactly what was said. I got you.
And speaking of the minutes, where are the minutes?
They certainly have not changed where they're supposed to be. Are we, are we late uploading something?
I, I'm, I'm just wondering, do we get a minutes? We usually like them for this, but usually get them to, but that, but, if you go to have them. Definitely.
Yes.
For this one.
I will, I will discuss. Of course, I will discuss in the morning.
All right, um. Four B, we need to talk more about budget tonight.
Can we um. Pick a meeting date?
Yeah.
We can, if you want to.
I do.
In public, special meeting.
A special meeting just for.
I think we've got so much to cover.
Yeah, I, I think, trying to get it done in a work session when we got other stuff going on, we'll just have the work session end at midnight.
Yep. All right.
I have nothing on my calendar at all.
Would you guys rather do a weekday that none of the other committees are meeting or a weekend?
I like my weekends. I said I like my weekends.
Actually great for. I know, that's true.
We have two Tuesdays left in all this, this month and next week's taken up, so Tuesday, twenty-eighth.
I, I just said Tuesday for some, for whatever reason. I'm good with whatever anybody else.
When does they are be?
First Thursday.
Okay, we're at the lockout first Thursday in March, about the twenty third, Thursday the twenty third.
Thursday the twenty third of, of this month?
You'd, you'd be on Tuesday and Thursday in the same week, but different topics.
I'm fine with it.
Or Monday the twenty seventh.
Why don't we?
Mondays, I mean, we're all used to Mondays anyway, you want to say Monday, twenty seven?
Okay, let's have a special workshop on budget on Monday the twenty seventh.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
I'll um, I'll hold that date.
Yeah, I guess we'll talk about financial policy that kind of.
It's, it's fair to go together, how to um, as you load those line items, how do you, how clearly do you want them controlled as well? So you have policy changes. At the same time. True.
Bill, we need any more discussion when the uh. Prices actually start off that way. It is a point three thousand.
Yeah, this, it's a good example, so by, by current policy of, of. It's.
How, how much of it is covered by the man?
So it. Everything, yes, yes, so it's, it's, it's in our budget that we.
Matt's got a running forty three thousand dollar check, I've got to take it south to a lot of, bring the invoice and the bill and the title and everything back here and then we have to submit. To the plan.
It's, it's, it's routine and you know, we, we, we've done this before. It's in the budget, we won the grant that we thought we would want, the vehicle costs what we thought would cost, it costs less than we thought it would cost, but it is a. Large check, so if you, it's a good example of if you want to be voting before we clear that money out.
I think that's a good idea.
Then this is a time to do it.
When were you scheduled to get down there and get it though?
I'm gonna go get it on the twenty fifth, council approved, that's why I just wanted to make sure we were okay, I saw our heads now and when we talk about it in my.
Yeah, well, if you want to talk about it, Bill, which I think is fine, let's just make sure we do it before it gets down there.
If your purchase should be up routinely at the.
I have a question. If we don't use the grant money to per, see, I feel like grant money falls into like a different. Category a little bit, if we don't use the grant money to purchase that. Police car, what happens to the grant money?
The federal government keeps it.
So I, I feel like that's different, yeah, I feel like that's.
Yeah.
I feel like operational stuff, grant money that we're gonna lose if we don't use it for that specific thing.
You know, you're plotting forward, we've done it before, and it sounds funny, US Department of Agriculture. Um, financing a police vehicle, but that's the way it works. And uh, so basically, we've already approved the purchase of the vehicle.
Yeah.
And it's like, uh, Chief says, you'll take the check down there for forty three thousand dollars. Uh, and pay for it, and then we have to be, you know. Uh, reimbursed by USDA.
But we got.
Not spending town money.
Yeah.
For this, it's been the temporarily, then this.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's different, because this is. We are not going to have that money, either we get a police car.
Or not.
And we don't have that money anymore because we spread it on the police car, or we don't get a police car, but then they take that grant away. And either way, we don't have the money, this way we have a police car.
Yeah, we can't use.
Yeah, you know, I, I feel, I feel like grant money and operations are different.
I mean, I, I kind of feel like, you know, since you're not a board, you don't approve.
Yeah.
We, then go full circle, there's no reason to have any other discussion about.
Uncomfortable about voting.
Okay. So I need to write all this down, so I would.
Yeah, well, I think that'll be, we'll do the strategic plan. I think all this stuff will follow through.
Do you want to mention any more of the sidewalk project?
That, that, um, that's one where, where VDOT is requesting a council vote. Um, we had uh, previously voted. Uh, once council voted to apply for the grant and then later council voted to proceed with the project. Now, VDOT is strongly cautioning that it's likely to be a buck overrun and the town by that contract will be on the hook for the overrun. So they're checking in, are you sure you want to do this? And I said, I suspect we do not want to do this because of the state of our budget, so VDOT would like your vote to go ahead and cancel and redesign.
And we can't vote tonight, right? We can only vote at council meeting.
Just giving you heads up.
Okay.
If we cancel the job, we're off the hook for sixty thousand dollars, that takes the justice we didn't have.
Helps that budget situation quite a bit, I think that's the right, and, and I know you, you've been skeptical about it the whole time, here, here we are, you're right. You did.
Yeah, it's a talent.
Yep, you, you're not wrong.
All right, let's finish up this thing with parks improvements.
Well, I've got some other potential about that, uh, that I like to, uh. Actually, I said the example of how we really managed that. Firstly, I'd like to see what we're taking out of the byway. I don't see, think it's kind of search purpose, it's in the way and it, and it's dangerous there. Um, and I, I don't think it's ever been part of our, I, I do think if we got a master plan, we got a credible master plan, it's suitable. About years ago, and it is, and it's uh, covered everything and it has, it has all the uh. All the, all the, everything we're supposed to be dealing with for, for every, for every year. And this was not in the master plan, I think we just need to follow the master plan, there was nothing in there about kiosks, there was nothing in that about putting, putting something in the park left. Several people mentioned this to me, I mean, it looks like a bus stop there. I don't know why there's seats on these things, we don't need seats, you're supposed to be walking in a park. Um, and there's two, but anyway, the, the park and communities, I think, should be. You know, built into the budget and we should follow that, follow the master plan for that, same with families as well, that's a part of the uh, budget. Uh, I just think we need to just. Not just do something helter skelter, just because it's, um, you know, I know they have really bought into this and you see written up. Like everybody in the world about that, say even, even the county supervisor, uh, former. You know, yeah, I saw that, let's see, the other day, a former people, you know, maybe you had a committee there and you used to be really involved in this park. But um, you know, that goes, that committee does not, does not make decisions, they don't make decisions. And I don't think they have a saying, what, what goes on in the park. You know, they, if he does, he should present it to us, but anyway, I, I, I don't, I don't think the kiosk thing was. Was a very wise or very useful thing. You know, having a couple of them is fine, uh, but I think that should be a town contingent.
Well, I also think with the uh. The one up here, I'm not totally sure, I looked at the plot once, I think. That grassy area behind it is actually, you know, town land or whatever, it goes on the same thing, cause I've, I looked at that in my driveway. I think my driveway ends on the edge of the concrete of my driveway, which if, you know, not to add to Cody's. List of things to do, but you know, if that was a little more cut over, might be a good spot for it too, but.
But everything I've looked at, I think it's just about size, not about the size, they were never major size, they were just. I mean, they're nice, no question about it, nice, there are other Cadillacs, so. But for a small town, it's just like, that there, need to take away from it.
What is eventually going to go on those? I mean, it looks like it's like boards almost, like a message for.
Yeah, um, uh, map, uh, bulletin board where temporary notices could be put like, um. Uh, wildlife information, bird watching, something like that, uh, and then it's got a box for, um, like trail maps or brochures in it. So the.
Something like a you are here now.
Yeah, yeah, um, one of the scan, uh, board members, Luke Dupont, is a, a skilled, um, computer. Computer mapper, um, he's, he's good with that and he's, he's volunteered to make a trails map.
Cool.
Um, so right, right now what we have is um, a Canron, a copy of where the trails are, so it'd be. Be nice to make that better.
Those things are, and maybe just front of the, up, downstairs too.
I mean, we don't need to beat it dead horse, what's done is done now, just we'll make them as awesome as we could possibly make them. I'm offering four nice maps down there.
Okay, anything else? So. Why don't you think about some, when we talk about budget, think about some specifics for the park? Okay, I'm, you know, specific areas on the budget, addressing issues in the park.
Right.
And then we'll have to guide lines to stick by in the future.
You know, well, we never decided, I mean, or I guess we just, what, what about that, the parking lot?
Well, I don't think we want to move it right now, was, let's, let's get, we talked about it more.
Well, we set on the agenda for the council meeting next year.
I, I, I believe so, we've got the, the couple of public hearings, give notice of another special meeting. And. Close session, yes, which, which may, may.
Should we do that before the annual meeting, so that, that person will be, wherever we. They're going to be part of.
They're not seated immediately, they're not seated immediately, no.
They still have to be, but.
Yeah.
So they're, that's.
The close session may take a while because you're doing four interviews, would you like to? What, that's what I was gonna ask, beginning or end?
Good at the end, yeah, can you also clarify, uh, mayor, if you want to. Help with that, clarify what my standing is.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Bowling has, is, he's gonna file the paperwork for the special election. And then at the same time, who's going to ask the judge's opinion, Mr.
Okay.
The judge's thing.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
Sooner rather than later.
And as soon as we'll get, I hear from him, I'll call you.
Okay, yeah, it, it's a, it's a funny enough law question and that, asking the judge is a good idea.
Yeah.
The judge used to work for him.
He'll then do the annual meeting just before the uh, close session.
Okay.
I would think. Take care of this first, I don't mean. Talk about assignments and meeting dates and times, irrelevant, just so to know.
Yeah. Um, yeah, meeting schedule is in there, one of the things that's sometimes helpful for bodies is if you, if you know that you want to cancel a meeting upcoming for holidays. Like sometimes you'll in advance cancel your August meeting for summer vacation or your December meeting for Christmas, and then you just know. You've got M meetings in the next year instead of twelve, things like, you can do that if you want.
We have the events in the last, and we, we had one.
Yeah.
Pretty clear what's, what's in the annual meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we, they did used to, they used to be held in July, because when we had May elections, they'd be seated and. It's not much to it, the, the, um, the main thing that would change is af- after an election, you do the vice mayor thing for the, for the top vote getter. Um, and designate that vice mayor.
My vice mayor?
Think about it.
Yeah.
Kidding.
We uh, we used to do that, but I, I was about several, so every year we did it, obviously, the planning. But I'm not sure if they've been doing their annual meeting. They'll let them, I'll show them, who, who had dates and where they're going to be, so that, I think they're super one too, unless they have any rocks.
Have to go check.
Cause every, every August, when I was at the time, for sure, we had a, a annual meeting.
Okay.
And when I do this, you want to meet then, want to be here, and uh. And who's the chairman and who's the vice chair?
And will next week's meeting? Suffice for an annual meeting?
I think it's, it's a, it's a month, it's a month late, um, because we, we were busy last month.
I mean, it doesn't have to be a town meeting?
No, no, no.
Just the. Early in the year.
You still want to be a sort of, you, you want to, you want to decide for, for one of this.
We have debated that in the past, depending on folks' schedules, some, we've, in the past considered starting at six for these. And depending on your work schedule, start earlier, get home earlier.
Oh, Tuesday has my best.
About six thirty or something.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Oh, I'm, I, I meant as, as part of that organizing meeting. Change your meeting time, you could start all your meetings at six.
Yeah, I guess we can do that.
I'm not for six o'clock.
You've noticed seven, seven.
Hey, anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you, that's. Good night, Mr. Rolling, thank you, and advice as always.
Well, take care.